Are we ready?
Okay, we are ready. If we can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone will please remain standing for a moment of silence for Jean Pascarella, a longtime Salamanca Warrior, teacher, educator, administrator, who recently passed after a long illness. Thank you. Just for the record, six of the seven board members are here. Mrs. Ray is participating via Zoom. Mrs. Ray, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Carrie, seconded by Sue.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carried. Item A, our presentation for Class Pages.
Yes, at this time, I would like to turn it over to our technology coach, Sue Schnauffer, who will walk us through the platform that we're using for e-learning, Class Pages.
Well, thank you, everybody, for letting me present today. Today was opening day, and it was exciting. We had a command center going in the LGI. We fielded, I think, hundreds of phone calls. And our big hit was Unified Classroom and our Class Pages. So I have a PowerPoint I'm going to bring up a little bit here. And... I have to share that screen, too. Yep. We'll just do a new share. So Unified Classroom is a Power School product, and we purchased Power School. The first year that I came here was our big project. So the summer of 2018, we rolled from e-school into Power School. And after some searching for a learning management system, Dr. Beeler had put a couple of groups together, and we looked at Google Classroom. And we looked at this new product that Power School had called Unified Classroom and Class Pages. So we decided to go after a team met, and we looked at both products. We decided to go with Unified Classroom. We rolled that out in the summer of 2018. We did several trainings. Teachers came in for three-hour trainings and three-hour work sessions, and they learned about Unified Classroom, and they learned about their gradebook, and they learned about Class Pages. We had a few early adopters in both the high school and Seneca, some people that were really gung-ho to start using a learning management system. And they started learning, and I started learning, and Levi started learning along with me. And Dr. Beeler and the district were kind enough to send me to Power School University to learn everything that I could about Class Pages. And we kept going. Fall of 2019, under Mr. Marganti's leadership, he saw the benefit in having a learning management system in Seneca, and he required that all the teachers got trained. So I spent the fall of 2019, hot and heavy, training our Seneca teachers, which was a great thing because March came and COVID shutdown came. And those Seneca teachers really had a good grasp on the functioning of Unified Classroom. So we were able to turn a lot of our class materials over into Unified Classroom and begin the process of learning what remote teaching was going to be. Our high school teachers were ready to go. A lot of them had been trained, but they really hadn't grasped on. But when COVID came, they really had to start looking into how they could use that to serve their students. So we fuddled through the spring of 2020. We did a pretty good job, I think, compared to a lot of other districts. We were really in the lead as far as remote learning went using our Class Pages. In June, Ms. Pavone decided that it was time to start introducing the Prospect teachers to Class Pages. So we did some meet and greets, basically, during the month of June, where the Prospect teachers came in and learned a little bit about Class Pages and some of the functioning that it could do so they could wrap their mind around it. And this summer, we went crazy with training. We trained in Class Pages. We trained in a lot of different programs that could connect into Class Pages and really showing the teachers how they could use a learning management system to turn things around for students during remote learning, where it was a one-stop shop for students. So we did do a lot of extensive training this summer. So right now, Class Pages is our primary content holder for all e-learning in all three of our buildings. We have a lot of different resources that are integrated right into Class Pages. NearPod, if you've never heard of NearPod, it's a great resource that's very similar to PowerPoint, but it had a lot of interactivity into it. And teachers get reports back on what the students actually do in a NearPod that can be embedded right onto a Class Page. In our high school, we have a program called Turn It In, and you might know about Turn It In. It's a program that allows students to take a paper. Turn it in, the teacher can see plagiarism, copyright issues, but it also teaches the students how to look at their own writing and improve their own writing. PlayPosit is a cool, new service that we recently bought right before COVID hit. And that, you can take a video, and you can put interactions into them, like a multiple choice, select all, open responses. And it's even good for the little kids because it has a voice recorder. So if the student can't type the answer, they can hit the voice recorder, and they can record their answer to a prompt, and the teacher can listen to that prompt. It automatically grades, and it automatically goes into the teacher's gradebook. Remind, Bob will tell you, I was up at 1:00 in the morning finishing our integration to Remind. And Remind is a communication tool that allows teachers to be able to communicate with parents and students through an app, basically like a cellphone. It can also go to an email. And that's also integrated into Class Pages as of this morning. Padlet is a new product that we're buying that also embeds right into Class Pages and allows a lot of interactivity where students can upload files and pictures and their voice, and it goes right onto a Class Page. And then the teacher can see what they're doing, and they can respond to each other using comments. Our Office 365 products, any online Word documents or PowerPoints or even Excel spreadsheets can be embedded right onto a Class Page. And cool, in Word, there's an immersive reader. So if you've got a young student, and they can't read, and you embed a document, they can turn on an immersive reader, and Word will read the document for them. We can also put in YouTube our own created videos using Microsoft Stream, and we are able to put links to our Class Link and other resources right onto our Class Pages. So I have a few examples of Class Pages that I'd like to show you. So here, in our primary school computer lab... Hope this works. Sign me out. Can you still see the screen? I'd like to recheck. Okay. Bestly plans, it didn't stay logged in. There's too many As in Salamanca. I wanted to say the parents that we worked... Oh, come on. I don't know why it's giving me trouble. Sometimes when you're logged in with a different account, it can... Let's see if this'll pop the links up. Okay, that's not gonna function the way I wanted it to, so we will just pop in. So we spent a lot of time at Prospect, and Prospect has a lot of grade-level pages. As an administrator, I have access to all the teachers' pages. So when there's an issue... Oh, my gosh. So when there's an issue, I'm able to go in through the back door, and I'm able to help a teacher or a parent with an issue that's happening. There we go. Might take me a little bit longer this way to find what I'm looking for. But we have grade-level classes at Prospect. So every grade level has what we call a master class, and all the kids and the parents are cooked to that one class. So they're able to come in, and as a grade level, they're able to put their content right up on Class Pages. So you'll see their first page here is a weekly to-do list. They're able to put hyperlinks in and go right to another page on the class. So on my to-do list, I knew I had to come in, and I had to go and look to see what I wanted to do, meet my teachers, so I can go right to that class. They're able to link in files and links to other websites as well. So every grade level, pre-K through third grade at Prospect, has a grade-level class like this. And let's see what else we can show you. We've spent a lot of time at... Oh, here's a class. So we also have classes for teachers. So the instructional coaches have classes for teachers. So parents and children would not have access to this, but this is a training class that I've been working on all summer. So all of our different technology that we've trained on all summer long, the teachers have pages for all the resources that go along with all those different technologies, training videos, files. Becky, our ELA coach, has done a lot of ELA training all summer. Our math coach has used this very extensively for all of her math training in the summer, as well as our science and social studies coach, Ms. Brown. She's also uses it very extensively to train all of our faculty on all the different things they needed to know to move forward into this year for all of those subjects. I wanted to show you, we have... Sorry, the links didn't work. Here's Mr. Schnauffer's computer lab page, and I'm pulling this up because he has NearPods. So this is his page. He can go to all these different grade levels with just a click of a picture. And I wanted to show you the NearPod so you can get an idea of what... Here's his video on how to use Class Link. And where did he put his NearPod? Here's the NearPod. So here's NearPod. Normally, a student would have to go to nearpod.com, and they'd have to type in a code to be able to use their NearPod. But with the magic of technology, all they have to do is click on this little icon right here. It's going to take their username that they've logged into Class Link or Class Pages with, and it's going to connect them to the teacher, to their NearPod class. When they join the lesson, all the magic happens in the back. They'll be able to, going through this slideshow, there's interactives, like a drawing tablet. They can draw like a picture or a math problem. There's games that they can play. And all of these activities go back to the teacher, and the teacher gets a report identifying each child and every activity that they completed in a NearPod. So this is a nice way for us to be able to take content that we used to use in the classroom, turn it electronic so the student can complete it at home, and the teacher can still see everything that that student did. We also have Class Pages at the seventh, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that are community Class Pages. And these teachers, I want to show you the seventh grade. These teachers have been using Bitmoji classrooms, and I don't know if you've heard of Bitmoji classrooms, but they are like the hot thing in e-learning right now. So all of our seventh-grade teachers have created little Bitmoji classrooms. They've got a little video here. The seventh-grade teachers recorded a video. And here's their Bitmoji classroom. So each teacher has a little Bitmoji. If you click on your teacher, you'll go right to their classroom and be able to access all their videos and all their content. Dr. Beeler, we have a Salamanca faculty that we use for COVID information, to be able to get information out to our teachers. And Dr. Beeler has been great modeling that for our teachers. So our teachers are used to going into Class Pages and using it as a student themselves so that they can experience how the students function. That'll make them a better teacher when it comes to using Class Pages as a teacher. So I thought this was cute. If you pop on, so here's Mr. Wade. I'm sure most of you know Mr. Wade, seventh-grade science teacher. When you click on him, you'll go right into his classroom, and you'll be able to see his weekly to-do, his Zoom links for his instructional times, and any files or videos that he's created. So it's a little snippet of how Class Pages work. Do you have questions for me, Dr. Beeler?
I'm spending just a couple moments talking about security and how this is only, or who can actually see this as opposed to a traditional sort of webpage?
Yep. So on a traditional webpage, we put everything out and it's basically published for the public. In a learning management system, your class is the only people that can see your content. So it's considered an extension of your classroom. So there's a lot more liberty for teachers as far as what they're putting up for content because it's an extension of their four walls, things that they can do in their classroom, they can do in their learning management system, where if they were publishing things on the web, they'd have to be a lot more cognizant of what they were putting up for copyright and protection and liability. So our students are protected in here. Only a student registered to the classroom or a student that a teacher has added or another teacher that a teacher has added has access to these classes. So you have to be a member of Salamanca CSD to use most of these features, and you have to be a member of the class that you want to go to. So it's not just willy-nilly, like, you know, I can't... If I were a student in fourth grade, I can't get into the high school classes and access that information. I have to be a member of that class. Any other burning questions? Anything you guys have been wondering about? And this is, I want to say, I am honored to work for this district because it has allowed me to really stretch my own capabilities and the things that we've been able to build this summer into this. When I talk to my other educator friends, and I tell them the things that we have at our fingertips and for our students to use, they look at me in awe. They're like, "We can't believe that you have that all built, and you have that capability for your students." And I really think that with your support, we have really been allowed to become a leader in e-learning and provide things for our students that many other districts are not able to provide. Yes? Nope, we are the leader in Unified Classroom in this area of the state. Yep.
What was the question?
If any other areas in Western New York were using Unified Classroom? We were early adopters. We learned some hard lessons through it, but I think we have really risen. Power School, I think, knows me by name because every time something doesn't work the way I want it to, I'm on making a help ticket. And they're like, "Uh-oh, that's that Mrs. Schnauffer again. Here she comes." But they help me fix things and get things so that they work in the best interests of our teachers and our students. And we really push the envelope with this. I'm not sure many other districts are embedding and putting as much into Class Pages as we are. So it's been a great experience, and I know the teachers really enjoy it. It's very easy to use for a teacher. It's very easy to use for a student once they become comfortable with that type of a platform. It's very new, especially for our younger learners and our parents, who have been excellent. We talked to hundreds of parents today, and our parents have been very gracious and very accepting and are working super hard to try to make e-learning work for their students. So I have been honored to work with the parents.
So is this a situation where if a student was having problems and they couldn't figure out on where to go, do you have the capability to do a go-to meeting where you can get into their laptop and basically show them step-by-step on where they need to go and what they need to click on?
Yep. As a matter of fact, yesterday with BOSI's help, we were able to create a Help Desk Zoom account. And today, we had eight people hooked up to that Zoom, and we were able to go into breakout rooms, and we were able to individually help people. As an administrator on this, I'm able to go in, and I was able to fix several issues that had come up during the day. We can also remote control into student devices and help parents solve problems with our Zoom capabilities. So yeah, we, if this had happened 20 years ago, we probably, schooling probably would have stopped. But the fact that we have all these technologies available to us now is what's allowing us to keep going and keep people safe.
I like it. It looks nice.
It's been a lot of fun, a lot of fun to work on. Dr. Beeler, I'll tell you, I'm probably a pain in the neck sometimes because I'm constantly asking questions and trying to get things hooked up and buy new programs that work with this. But our teachers have really liked it. It's very, it's very easy to use on the back end with a little training, not, you know, days and days and days of training to try to use a program. And they are very good about reaching out for help and trying new things. And one of the things we can do, we have electronic drop boxes here. So we can take, in our electronic gradebook, we can make an assignment. We can hook the assignment right to our Class Page, and our students can go in, and they can upload files directly to the teacher's gradebook that the teacher can pull up and grade right there on the spot. Give comments, return the paper back to the student. The student can make corrections, return it back to the teacher. The teacher can regrade it and put comments on it and take it right back to the student. And those papers stay right with Power School. So it's part of our system. The papers don't go away after, you know, so many years. Everything is connected permanently to our gradebooks. So we have a file repository also. So I taught at college for four or five years as a distance education educator, and I use several different platforms. And none of the platforms compare, even from the college level, to the things that we can do in here. Now, that was before I came to Salamanca, so four or five years ago. I'm sure some of them have changed. But the things that we can do here in the interactivity that we can provide for the students is second to none.
Oh, wow.
Any other questions? Thanks for letting me present. I'm very proud of this and I'm very proud of our teachers. I think they've done great work.
Thanks, Sue.
I think it's important to note that one of the reasons, if not the reason, that we have the abilities with Unified Classroom and Class Pages is really due to the work that Sue has invested into this. She won't say it, but I think this is sort of like her life's work at this point, it seems like. Every teacher in the district has had contact with her, and the functionality and ability of all of our educators to be more adept in the e-learning environment is 100% due to the contributions that she has made to the district. So while you were honored to have us, we really thank you for the help that you've contributed.
Okay. Again, thanks a lot, Sue. That's awesome. Great work because that's so much. And keeping up on the technology, helping all the different types of classrooms to get accustomed to the different styles of learning, it's really, it's really impressive. And I'm glad that we're ahead of the game on that. Okay, our next update is the update on our school safety and reopening. Who's gonna take away that little presentation?
I think that's me again. Okay, so as Sue mentioned, today was our first day of e-learning for all students except those in grades four and five. Our fourth and fifth-grade students will start their e-learning on Thursday, which is the third. Our BOSI CTE program starts the eighth, along with transportation for that as well. Our specialized instruction for all three buildings for specific students starts on the 10th. And then our hybrid students are on campus the first time for the 14th. So you can see that we're slowly phasing more and more students in, which is in line with our commitment to ensuring that we are essentially starting slowly. And as we become more adept, we will have more and more students on campus as it is safe. Transportation routes have been completed as of this afternoon. Information is going to be going home later this week with regard to specifics as far as bus routes and pickup and drop-off times. So parents should expect that at the end of this week or the beginning of next week. And again, that isn't necessarily necessary until the 14th, so we still have about two weeks before that pickup will start. One thing that we have noticed is that there were some significant delays in mail. So that caused a bit of impact with regard to some of the information that parents needed to get on today. There were also a couple delays with technology getting returned. There were, I wouldn't want to put a percentage, but probably 3% to 4% of student devices that were returned to the school because of moves or teacher or parents that were unavailable to be at home for the pickup or the delivery of the devices. So those devices were available for the parents to pick up after hours or were taken back out at a scheduled time. So that's more or less an update on the educational side. With regard to safety, on August 27th, so that was last week, Thursday, the District Safety Committee met. A considerable amount of time was spent on ventilation and the proper turnover rates for air and filtration. Our Superintendent of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Pankowski, provided an update on our air exchange rates in each of the rooms. One of the things that is important to note is that we do have significantly more contemporary air handling systems than most other districts do, particularly at Prospect. It's literally only a week old. So one of the key factors is the air exchange rates or how many, how frequently the air in a room is turned over per hour. That is recommended to be four times per hour. Our district is on the low side, seven to nine. So we guarantee about seven to nine air exchanges in a classroom per hour. We've also modified our air exchanging or the percentage of outside air that comes in. So we know that it's less efficient to constantly be bringing outside air in because we have to acclimate that to the temperature we want it. So most, like our house, probably has a very low turnover rate unless you open the door. The air that's in the house stays in the house. So that's great for efficiency sake, but not necessarily for safety and fresh air. So we are forsaking the economics and the efficiency, and we have opened the dampers to the maximum ability so that we have as much fresh air as possible coming in. So many districts are saying that they have windows open or doors open. In our buildings, that's not necessarily necessary because of the types of air handlers that we have. We don't have the old-school radiant heat, which just sort of keeps the same air in a room. We're actually turning the air in the room over as frequently as possible. So just like tonight, we spent quite a bit of time, apparently, talking about ventilation on last Thursday. One of the other outcomes from that meeting was the decision to have staff and students and anyone that's on campus... to have staff and students and anyone that's on campus wear masks the entire time that they are on campus. That is going to be set other than for designated break times. Each one of the building safety committees will determine what that looks like because it's by grade level and age of student. Giving a break for taking a mask off will depend upon the, sort of the tolerance of the students. But the expectation here and the reason is because the more we can do to improve the safety for our students, the, the more we're going to do. So that recommendation was made and voted upon and has been incorporated into the updated District Education and Safety Plan. So that's about where we stand right now. Each one of our buildings are doing safety committee check-ins at the building level. As issues arise, we will get the district level safety committee together to address larger scale issues such as the frequency of wearing masks as well as any other concerns that come about. On another note though, our PPE supplies are quite good. We have plenty of barrier devices, including masks, gloves, gowns, sanitation items. All of our teachers have access to or have been provided with the latest antiviralid wipes that can be used in the classrooms. They have gloves, hand sanitizer. So we are doing everything we can to ensure that we have the safest environment for our teachers and therefore for our students as well. Thank you.
So that goes for Board of Education members too, correct, Mark?
Yeah, I wasn't the one who wanted to say anything. Correct.
I just want everyone to know we're gonna lead by example and make sure that we all have our masks on. So does that mean keep them up the entire board meeting?
Yes, that was the decision of the District Safety Committee was that masks really are going to be worn by everyone all the time while on campus.
Mask shaming.
Mask shaming. What? Yes. Get a straw.
Get a straw.
Okay. Then let's go on to communication. Do we have anybody from Title VI?
No.
Okay, then let's move to Central Office message. Does Karen have anything?
Karen does. Two things. One, as Mark indicated earlier, transportation routes are, are done, being finalized, et cetera. We will have calls are going to be made starting tomorrow to let folks know what day and what time their little kiddos are going to be picked up. And then secondly, as some of you have probably seen, the notification went out as far as lunches starting on Thursday, the 10th. So if you want your student to have lunch while they are at home e-learning, please make sure you sign up. And if your student is in school learning, they will obviously eat here. And for those that are doing the hybrid thing, say if you're an AB kid, you come to school Monday, Tuesday. Tuesday, when you get off the bus, you will be handed a box of meals for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then the same thing for the B students. When they get off the bus on Friday afternoon, they'll be handed the box of food for the following Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. If you're e-learning, you will pick up your food on Mondays and it will be a box of five meals, well, five breakfast and five lunch. So 10 meals total, I guess. So those will start rolling out here on the 10th.
So are we delivering them to students?
Not at this point. We don't have the capability to do all that right now. We do have eight locations. We expanded it. We added the public library and the corner, well, not the corner, but on Center Street, the Baptist Church and that parking lot.
Okay.
So we've added, oh, yeah, so we've added those two locations in addition to the six that we already had.
Nice. Okay. Dr. Beeler, anything else?
I'll make just a couple of notes. On the education side, as we know, today was our first e-learning day. We anticipated and expected some hiccups. So to mitigate some of that and alleviate some of the stress that parents would have and students would have in getting signed in, we set up essentially a call center and provided a wide range of support options for our students and for parents or anyone who was logging in or just honestly, we ended up answering questions about homework assignments, whatever. They were calling and asking for help. I want to thank my assistant, Anne Smith. We had a single phone point of contact, extension 6128 for the entire day so that people didn't have to figure out who to call. They called her and then she distributed the phone calls to whoever needed it if people were phoning in. Email support was available from our coaches and particularly again, Mrs. Schnaufer, Mr. Miller provided excellent support there. We had in-person support and we had Zoom support. So if there was a way that people needed help, we were able to meet them where they were and provide them with that assistance. There were times when there were four or five phone calls coming in at the same time. So it was good that we had that service available. I believe, I'm gonna look at Mrs. Schnaufer right now, who's probably answering emails. How are we doing on the number of backlogged emails? Are we? Great. So we have made the commitment to provide that service every single day until we determine that it's really not necessary anymore. So starting again tomorrow at nine o'clock, all of those individuals will be available to help with more login, access problems, questions. If parents just have a question about Unified Classroom and Class Pages and how to access where information is, how to get things set up, we're happy to work through that and help out. The last thing I'd wanted to do was just say, we completely understand that this is a new venture for our students and parents. We did do this in the spring, but starting out the school year is always a challenge. When students come back, they don't remember passwords, locker, you know, you name it. How to do just about anything that we normally do in school, it seems like. And now having to do that electronically just adds some stress. So the big message that I would like to have for our students and parents is just take a deep breath. There is no harm if people were not able to log on today. If your device came late, it's not the end of the world. Take the next couple of days. We will provide whatever the support is that's necessary. And we are anticipating that by next week, we should have everybody with devices logged in and we can begin to move forward with education as we sort of know it to be right now. I will tell you that we are though monitoring our metrics. So in other words, how many people are logging on, who's logging on and what the level of engagement is. And that can be done through various applications as well as time metrics to see how long students are spending on sites. So starting Thursday, we'll be pulling that attendance data and analyzing that so that starting Friday, students who have not had contact or parents who have not logged in, we will be reaching out with our support service folks to say, how can we help you? What's happening? How come you haven't logged in and you're already two days late? So while we want to make sure that we're providing the support, at the same time, we need everyone to realize we still need to be accountable, just like if we were in school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, for our Board of Education message. Barb, you want to start and then we'll just go around the room?
Barb, just remember to turn your microphone on, please. Thank you.
Thanks again to Sue for all your assistance with that program and helping all the staff. I watch the news a lot and I see across the country that we're really struggling with getting this right in a lot of areas. So thank you so much for everything you do. And I apologize for not being able to talk at the Zoom meeting the other day, but I was on a, I was on the call. I wasn't live, I guess. So by the time I did get on, I typed a message to everybody. So I just want to welcome back all the teachers. And I'm sorry that I, I wasn't live that day, but I was just figuring it out from my old laptop computer, which I hope lasts because I see there's a shortage of them. So, but welcome back, everybody, and thank you for all you do.
I guess I'm next. It had to have been pretty hectic here this morning. And I give you guys the real kudos for getting through it because that had to have been hard for the kids as well as the teachers and all the administrators. And thank you very much for getting us through day one.
I'm an anthropologist by training and we have this research method called participant observation where you said that it's in order to really learn something, you have to participate in it. You can't just watch from the outside. So this is my, started my third year on the board and I think I've learned a lot about Salamanca and K through 12 education. But I have a crash course in it now with my kiddo in kindergarten and during COVID too. So that presentation about class pages and everything, I've been on it constantly. So I really want to commend the staff and the teachers and the parents as well. I only have one kid who's doing e-learning and I am exhausted right now just from her, her three very short Zoom meetings that she had today. Just there's so much effort that goes into it, you know, not, not only here in the school, but also parents at home. And if anyone's watching or watches this recording later that has multiple kids in the district, I want to personally give you a medal because balancing all of that is, is incredible. So there's just a lot of time and effort there. So thank you. The other thing that I wanted to do is kind of go back to last meeting. There's something that happened during the last meeting that bothered me later and I just want to comment on it. So Teresa had asked some pretty pointed questions to our architecture firm, Hunt Architects, about their lack of communication with her. Instead of just apologizing for that lack of communication, they decided to throw Janet under the bus, which was completely undeserved. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank Janet for everything that she does as our district clerk. Highly professional, did not deserve that treatment. And, you know, just wanted to just publicly recognize her today at this meeting. And that's it.
I want to say congratulations on a successful day one during these crazy times and thank everybody for all the extra work that's going to go into continuing their success.
I just wanted to say, welcome everybody back for another school year. Exciting times we're in. Can't wait to see what comes of this. But I do want to echo a little bit of the sentiments that it is tough. You know, parents at home struggling to teach their kids. I have a wife who is a teacher in the district who's struggling to figure out how to teach our kids at home, which is a very difficult situation. Any teacher in the district with young kids at home, it's difficult. You're gonna find that this is not the ideal situation for any of you. I don't know how we're gonna assist in the future. I don't know how we're gonna accommodate this. But parents at home, I commend you. Teachers with kids at home, I commend you even more. That's all I have to say.
I'd also like to extend a very warm warrior welcome to all of our students and, and faculty this year. And it's a very unconventional start to our school year. I have the luxury of working with several different school districts in the area and everybody's going through, through the same struggles. So please bear with us. You know, parents, students, staff, we'll all get through it.
Yeah, thanks for that, Dale, because that's, it's so true. You know, I've been trying to reassure parents that I've been talking to. It seems like the kids are stressed and the parents are stressed. And I've been telling them, you know, we're all gonna figure this out together because we're all in it together and we're, we're gonna try to find the best way that works for everyone. So I reiterate that too, you know, welcome first day of school because it is exciting that at least we're having school and we didn't postpone it a week like some other districts had to do. And all the time and effort that went into making the first day as successful as it was, even though we do have bumps, we knew we'd have bumps. You know, we're just gonna keep plugging along and, and figure it out. I love the help desk that we set up so that people can call in. You know, and I think the more familiar that parents are with the technology, the easier it will get. And especially with, with multiple kids. You know, figuring out the schedules and when they can be on. And, and I think as a district, we just have to make that effort to try and support all of the kids and the parents the best way that we can. I know that we have some tutors that are on for approval tonight. And as much, I think we're fortunate that we have the supports that we can at least give parents and students that other districts right now can't. So I'm pretty proud of our district and excited to see where the technology goes from here. Okay, Bob, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I have a laundry list of things to report on and I'm very proud to go through these items. I do want to personally thank our IT staff and our IT help desk today for assisting us on our call center. Aaron Strauss, Sue Schnaufer, Kelly Clarko, Marcy Brown, Levi Spooniebarger, Anne Smith, Mark Beeler, Rob Miller, Scott Collins, Jake Healy, Rodney Creed and Bob Quinlan. And I'm sure there were probably a few others that bounced back and forth between that. I would safely estimate we served over several hundred phone, email and text inquiries. And we'll be up and running again tomorrow to assist our families login and deal with any tech issues they have. I would also like to thank our instructional, cleaning, buildings and grounds and transportation clerical and nursing staff for helping us to meet these new challenges. Today was a very good day to be a warrior. And as a thank you, I did speak with Teresa earlier this weekend and we will be partnering with Harvest Moon. Lunch order forms did go out for staff and partnering with Harvest Moon. They have a couple of indigenous options on there. And I think roughly 50% of the offerings have been some indigenous culinary treats, courtesy of the district. And thank you to Harvest Moon for making this happen. The meals will be packaged individually and delivered to staff in the buildings on Thursday, Friday and Tuesday. So we're very excited about that. We also met today with TeleMobile Medicine, myself and Julie Creed, our nurse manager. We also met and spoke with the Senate Health Clinic and we are ready to roll should we need to test children for COVID with parent consent as well as provide any testing that may be necessary for staff as a result of the virus. That should be up and running probably early part of next week once we get the kits from TeleMobile Medicine. Mrs. Beatty, our Director of Staff Development and Staff Training. My direction is prepping and working with two to three subs per building who will be deployed on a daily basis to our buildings. These substitutes will be trained in class pages and the online platform. Should we need more bodies or should staff do or have personal medical or family issues over the next few days and weeks, our two to three dedicated building subs will be trained and able to jump in at a moment's notice to provide support and continuity of instruction for our students at the various grade levels. I do want to thank the Board of Education for your support and your willingness to hire more staff tonight. On tonight's agenda, following some conversations with our Personnel Committee, some additional IT staff, definitely in a mobile platform world necessary, but also for expanding our tutorial staffing. With specific regard to our tutors, this will be posted and there is a mechanism for staff already to be tutors, pretty much at will. But we are targeting our tutors to work late evenings, weekends and on the kids' timeframe. What we know from COVID 1.0 is that the biological clock of secondary age students doesn't always align with middle-aged adult educators. And so we want to have access to students and we want to have high-quality instruction. We'll be working with what we anticipate some college education majors and college students. Some of them may be alumni or graduates from the district. But we hope to be reaching out and casting a wide net for education majors and college-age students perhaps moving into the education field. And we think that this will be a better saturation coverage for our high school students in particular to augment their biological clocks and to provide them the technical support. So that's coming soon to a theater near you. On two really positive notes, we received a parent note just a few minutes ago, and I believe this is from a Prospect parent who just said, "I just want to say you guys are doing an amazing job. This cannot be easy. Thank you for everything." And I think that tends to be the sentiment. And as we move boldly and aggressively into COVID education in an e-learning platform, it's important to remind ourselves that we're new at this, too, that we should truly set high expectations and provide the supports necessary to get those expectations to a reality. We've told the parents, if we're doing well, tell us. If we're not doing well, tell us more, and let us know how we can improve. And I want to thank the parents who took the time and waited on our help desk today, but also for the parents who helped other parents. This is an all-hands-on-deck event, as I said before. And I said there were two positive things. So at this time last year, 9-1-2019, to today, 9-1-2020, I'm proud to report that our district enrollment is up 27 students. In a time when most districts are experiencing significant drops in enrollment, we're seeing more students come to us, we're seeing more students return to us, and I think that is a direct result of the amazing work that our board has done, the amazing work that our faculty and staff have done, and the amazing work that we have done to try to improve our educational product. So thank you. I have one last thing that is centered on athletics. Some of it's good news, some of it's news, and some of it's not-so-good news. So I'll start with the good news. As of today, it's our understanding that we have 22 7th and 8th graders that have signed up for swim. In years past, we would have one or two students in 7th or 8th grade that might pass the athletic APP test, the old selective classification test. But having 22 7th and 8th graders sign up for swim really suggests that we should be looking at adding a modified swim program, and that is something we'll be talking about more this week and next week. So as a parent of a swimmer, I think that's great news for our swim program. Fall sports guidance, this is kind of in the category of it's not really news, but it could be good, it could be bad news. We expect fall sports guidance to come out from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association regarding practices, contests, transportation, and safety guidelines to be out from Public High School Athletic Association on September 4. We have a meeting scheduled with all of our fall athletic coaches on September 8, Tuesday at 3:00, to discuss those guidance, and we anticipate diving into those over this weekend. And I think that most of the schools in our region are eagerly awaiting this guidance as to what it may mean for fall athletics. We do know that the state delayed the start of the winter sports season by two weeks to allow athletics to have a little bit longer time for the fall. That suggests strongly that athletics in the fall will be permitted, but according to the governor and Public High School Athletic Association, that decision finally rests with each of the individual districts. So we'll be talking with our coaches on Tuesday about how we can do that safely. And lastly, with regard to athletics, today, you may have seen the press release that Tim Slade, the Section 6 Athletic Director and Executive Director for the section, for the past 11 years, announced his retirement today, and Tim will be leaving his post after 11 years sometime this early winter. Mr. Slade was very helpful a few lacrosse seasons ago, bringing to light some racist issues in the sport of lacrosse. He willingly brokered a section-wide meeting with coaches and districts and athletic directors and officials and athletes in the Seneca Nation to help make meaningful changes in some unfortunate circumstances where overt and subversive racist activities were occurring by fans, sports, and it was not a good time for lacrosse. Mr. Slade and the section and the nation helped broker some meaningful changes, and there was positive movement in the sport of lacrosse. I want to thank Tim personally for his leadership in athletics, having served on the Athletic Council for Section 6 for the past three years. His leadership will be missed, and I want to personally thank him as both a friend and colleague for what he has done for athletics for the past 35 years. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. One last thing, too, that I did want to say is I did want to reiterate what Meg said about Janet, and I even think it goes to you, Bob, that, you know, Hunt had made basically accusations that they tried to call you and Janet. And we know, I know, that if anyone does contact you, that you do get back to them, that Janet gets back to them, and then we have full faith that when people do call our district, we do not ignore calls. So I do want to reiterate that, which I meant to do earlier and just...
Thank you, Teresa.
Old brain here. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Anyone?
Sorry, Teresa, my glasses fogged up. I lost my spot. Okay. Motion by Barb, seconded by Dale.
Motion by Barb, seconded by Dale. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. We have no old business. Our new business is to close a dormant bank account for the model Unipiffy, so we need a motion to close that bank account.
Motion by Meg, seconded by Brad.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And then Item B, we have donations. Donation from the Michael Dutch Trummer for summer swim program, and a $300 donation from Crisis Services to purchase books in memory of Cindy Moore for Prospect Elementary. So we need a motion to approve those donations.
Motion by Sue, seconded by Barb.
Are there any questions?
I have a couple.
Oops, I'm sorry.
So this donation for in honor of Dutch Trummer, there's no value.
What, I'll try, and then Jack, when Mr. Trummer had passed away, the family had requested funds and memorials in his honor be given to the district for the summer swim program. They're still coming in. I don't know exactly how much that is as of today.
Okay.
Yeah. We're not sure how much it could be.
Right, okay, so this is coming from the family?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Carrie, it's actually coming from anyone. I believe it was the wishes of the family that anyone that wanted to make donations for Mr. Trummer to make them and payable to the funeral home. And then the funeral home, upon collecting all of them, was going to submit them to the district as a whole.
Okay, awesome.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Karen.
Okay, then we have a motion by Sue, seconded by Barb. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And Helen Jaworski Scholarship, and this is going to be an annual scholarship for students entering the medical field that are kind and compassionate, as Helen was. So we need a motion to approve that scholarship.
Motion by Dale, seconded by Meg.
Are there any questions? All in favor? Sorry.
She a nurse?
Yes.
Yes.
Wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So we got a motion by Dale, seconded by Meg. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And our budget transfer, our final for 1920, so we need a motion to approve the budget transfers.
Motion by Brad, seconded by Dale.
Okay, motion by Brad, seconded by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And our activities for 2021, our co-curriculars that will be suspended until further notice, so we need a motion to approve our co-curricular resolution.
Motion by Meg, seconded by Sue.
Are there any questions?
I do have a comment. It's our expectation that we are running activities, but in talking with staff and the various associations that have contractual ownership of these positions, until we know what's happening with athletics and kids are on campus, we're not ending these activities. We're just simply taking a pause. We have approached the advisors, and we've appointed advisors for all of these activities and athletics, and we've asked them to just be patient with us. And if we are in an extended reopening delay because of the virus and safety concerns, that we will be looking at each club individually to provide them in a digital format. Some clubs are much easier to do that, like Newspaper or Honor Society, that could be doing some community service or tutoring. Other clubs and activities are simply really hard, if not impossible, to do in a remote capacity, like archery, like trap club. So we're just trying to get ahead of this and let people know that we are coming with this, but we need to be opening safely as a priority. I believe, once we find out what's happening with athletics, that may change things in terms of opening up those clubs, but this is just a temporary pause until we know more and can open more safely.
Okay.
Any question?
Questions?
Well, you mentioned advisors. What are we doing about class advisors?
Class advisors are in that same category. We'd sent communications to all the advisors, asking us, asking them to talk with their principals about how they could possibly do that. To date, none of the advisors have responded with that. I'm sure it's coming. I think there are more important and more higher priority things to do, but as those requests and outlines of how they can do it in a digital format, I'm sure that we'll be approving them to do it in a digital format.
Any other questions? Then we got a motion by Meg, seconded by Sue. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And Item F is our surplus items. We have 89 desks and 71 chairs at Prospect, 80 desk condos at the high school, so we need a motion to approve those items to be surplused.
Motion by Barb, seconded by, was that Carrie? I'm sorry. Carrie, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions on the motion?
I have a just question, comment. The City of Lansing School District in Michigan had surplus recently of desks, and what they did was they put them out for residents to pick up, because there are so many people that are e-learning, and as we know, we have a high-poverty district, and a lot of our kids are having issues with space at home. So I was just wondering if that's a possibility that we can do here.
Do you want to talk about that, or do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. Actually, that was a conversation that Ms. McGarrett and I were just having through the chat. We do have several people who have requested them, so we're going to put a process together whereby we can gather the names. If we end up with more names than available items, we'll do sort of a raffle, just to...
Lottery.
So it's fair. But we will, these will be distributed to community members first. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have, we do have any other questions? Then we got a motion by Barb, seconded by Carrie. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And this is going to be one of my favorites, to accept the Vets Park fencing bid for $198,900. So we need a motion to accept that bid.
Again, motion by Dale, seconded by Carrie.
Are there any questions?
Just to clear, oh, sorry, go ahead, Sue.
I have a question. What kind of a fence is it going to be? A chain link or something that you can't see through? I know I'm on Highland Avenue, and I was kind of looking forward, because looking out my kitchen window, I can see the playground over at Highland, and, you know, and I enjoyed seeing the kids playing over there. Well, now they put this fence up that you can't see through, and so now I can't see anything, which is fine, but I just wondered what kind of fence we were going to be putting up.
A bid that is on the agenda to be accepted is an eight-foot-tall fence along the Hancock and a portion of the Broad Street and a portion of Front Avenue, not the whole length of Front or Broad Street. But it is an eight-foot fence, and I believe it's gray. I, I'm not, I don't want to misspeak about it, but I don't have the drawing in front of me. Privacy fence, yes, thank you. No. Yep. And I should also note, just for clarification, it is, it also includes a change order for some additional tree removal. As the park has been constructed, there are some trees that we were hoping would be salvageable, but their root systems have really deteriorated over the past several months, and there are some additional trees as part of the bid package that are going to come down, particularly the ones right behind the Jumbotron.
Yeah, we don't want trees falling on that.
No, we do not.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
Yeah. So looking at his plan, and I know we still got to work on the properties that were recently acquired, are we going to look at a plan to continue this fence along the north side of Vets Park, once we get that property developed or figure out the plan with what we're going to do?
We've had those conversations, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Then we got a motion by Dale, seconded by Carrie. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Yay. And strategic plan, so we need a motion to approve the strategic planning, plan for 2025. The goals from 2025.
Motion by Meg, seconded by Carrie.
Are there any questions?
We have our next meeting, I believe it's Thursday at 11:00 a.m. This is a small organizational meeting to talk about year two.
Okay. Anyone else? Then we have a motion by Meg, seconded by Carrie. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And our district safety, whoops. Somebody say something?
Nope.
Okay. And Item M is our district safety plan, so we need a motion to approve our district safety plan.
Motion by Brad, seconded by Dale.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, then we have a motion by Brad, seconded by Dale. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And Item J is to create some positions, three information technology positions, and after our tutors, to be determined, starting on September 1. So we need a motion to approve those positions.
Motion by Carrie, seconded by Meg.
Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And Item A is our personnel consent agenda. Item A is a list of all the items. And Item B, we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda action items.
Motion by Barb, seconded by Sue.
Are there any questions on any of the items?
Yeah, Bob, can you just go over the revised on all the tenures?
Yes. We were, as we... Yes, we were, as we developed those for the last meeting, we had a different tenure area for Amy, Lisa, and Jennifer. We just wanted to make sure that we got that right. It doesn't change the date, just the tenure effective area, which would be tenure area, should be elementary, science, and speech.
Okay, any other questions? Then we have a motion by Barb, seconded by Sue. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. And do we have anybody we need to introduce?
There are a couple of people on the call. The first that I see on the list is Alan Turhune, who is a school monitor working for us within this Consolidated Service Unit. I wanna thank Alan for his faithful and continued service during some really crazy times last spring and appreciate him joining us and being with us this evening. And thank him for all of his hard work and his willingness to work with our students and the various buildings and assignments that he fulfills as part of the school monitor's duties primarily within the Transportation Department. I believe that I saw Josh Riblet on here earlier, but it doesn't look like he's on here currently. Josh is permanently appointment, a permanent appointment as an auto mechanic. And Levi Spoonibarger as a permanent appointment as our website operator extraordinaire. Thank you to Levi for so many things. We could be here all night listing them. But just simply say, part of our communications platform would be significantly lacking if it weren't for Levi. So Levi, thank you for everything you do on so many levels for our district. And I believe that's everyone on the call tonight.
All right, yes, thank you to everybody. Everybody does such a great job. Okay, Item 9 is just our board information and reports. September 15th will be our next Board of Education meeting. And let's see what else. That's it. We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Carrie, seconded by Dale.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for attending in person.
Thank you.
Have a great night.